Call this meeting the North Adams City Council to order for December 26, 2019. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the role?
Bona?
Here.
Buddington? Cohen?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
LaForest?
Here.
Liam?
Here.
Moran? Wilkinson?
Here.
You have court.
Have court. Please stand for a moment of silence remembering Terrence Flynn, English and history teacher at McCann Technical High School. And the pledge. My pledge is-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from December 10, 2019.
Motion to approve, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Minutes approved. Hearing of visitors. Two minutes on any agenda item tonight. We'll go with Mr. Smith.
I live at 140 Pleasant Street, and this is in reference to the agenda item regarding the school of Kemp Avenue. Still opposed to this deal for $1. I mean, if the city wanted to get rid of all their property they're holding that's just sitting there, we can sell everything for $1. But that wouldn't be a wise thing. What we need to do is get money into our budget. We need to establish a reserve account for any type of emergency that's maybe unforeseen. So I don't think this is a good idea to go forward with this. I think we should oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike Darian, 31 Goodrich Street, North Adams. I'd just like to take a moment just to thank everyone on the city council for all the work that you folks do during the year. Your dedication to your job and your position is commendable. So regardless of how everything goes for us tonight, I just wanted to say that to you folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak in hearing of visitors. We will move on to the agenda. First item is paper number 10,540-4, an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Section 13-61, entitled Fees for Parking Zones. This was in city council November 12, 2019. It was voted to refer to finance committee and voted to postpone to the meeting of December 26, 2019. What do we entertain for a motion?
I am going to make a motion to postpone to the first meeting in February. We have been, we did receive the recommendation from the mayor on November 12 for a change in fees, but we did not receive the analysis report that we were looking for since the summer. So we did receive that on December 5.
All right. So stop earlier. We need a discussion. We have a second. Now discussion. Do you want to discuss anything further?
Yeah, I just want to mention we didn't, we didn't get the, the analysis and the reporting to be able to look at this as a committee together until December 5. So I would like to postpone it to February.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone this to the first meeting in February. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Paper number 11,811, Communication Council LaForest requesting a process for appealing to the city solicitor. This was in city council November 12, 2019. It was voted to refer to general government committee and then voted to postpone to the meeting of December 26, 2019. What do we entertain?
You have before you.
We need a motion?
Well, you need a motion.
Yeah.
Move to approve the draft form before you tonight.
Okay.
Second.
So the general government committee met twice. We drafted the form the first time, finalized it the second time. It has been, I think I mailed it out to everybody about a week ago, just so you could have it before I meet tonight. The only thing we left in, as a question mark from the committee's point of view is whether or not this form would be signed off on by either a committee chair or the city council president. Obviously, the content of the entire document is up for debate.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. Counselor Lamb?
Yeah, I think this is a great, simple, straightforward form. There were just a couple things that I thought I would mention. To your point, actually, on the committee chair versus the city council president, I imagine it could probably be either, as long as it's not the committee chair requesting it, who's also signing off on it. So that was just one thing, and maybe that's just a matter of adding that line specifically there. The other thing is, along with the form, do we need to put something within council rules in order to accommodate this process, kind of in like a practical manner, not so much like the form itself can live separately, but having something in our rules that maybe directs councilors to use said form? That was just one thought. And then, just a thought about having specific language on what the, like actually have the question written out as to what's going to be asked from the solicitor, because I know sometimes if you ask one question, it leads down a rabbit hole of many questions, and that just turns into more time than we might anticipate. So maybe having a draft of the language to be used for the initial question to make sure we're not asking something that could be answered locally versus something that really needs to be asked to legal counsel. That's, I don't know if that thought makes sense, but just making sure that we're asking the right question when we're asking something.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yeah. This isn't a criticism, I'm just a question. One of the questions that it asks is estimated number of hours slash cost.
Yep.
How would we know that? That's, get it?
That's a tough one.
It's, it would be a real tough one. I have no idea. I don't even know what they charge us an hour to, I know it's a lot.
We know it's $500 to get them here.
Yep.
So that we know.
I, I just, it's possible to be able to answer that question.
Counselor LaForest?
So I believe the answer to the question is $250 an hour that KP bills the city, but I'm not sure. This was intended to be a guideline, a tool, not a contract or, you know, a permission slip per se. There is provision within the city ordinances that any officer of the city government can contact the solicitor without permission of anyone else, per se. But we felt very strongly that councilors should have a checklist as to, you know, seeking out the answer, as Counselor Lamb indicated, before going to the solicitor. So I don't know that the, the form has to be perfect, per se, but it, I would agree that there should be an indication in our council rules for the coming term that, you know, councilors are significantly and seriously encouraged to, you know, refer to the form before attempting to, you know, contract with the solicitor, because it does add up very quickly.
Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I think it's a, a good idea, the checklist. I, I like the checklist, because we should be really reviewing things and making sure that we used all our resources prior to going to the solicitor, because it is costly. So I, I think this is a great idea. I, however, I'm, I'm not sure if I, I need anybody to sign off on anything, you know? I mean, I, I feel as though I'm an elected official. I, I'm fully capable of doing my due diligence and, and, you know, letting people know if I contacted the solicitor or not, or if it's a confi, it could be a confidential matter that I might not necessarily want other councilors to know. So I'm just not sure about the signing off portion.
Other councilors?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to say is, early on when I, when I served, it was very common, at least almost every other meeting, we would always refer things to the solicitor. And, you know, we've gotten away from that, and I think partly because the relationship with our current legal counsel. But, so, one thing is, if it's not something you need to know the answer that week or that night, it can always be put on the agenda, and the council can vote on it to refer it to the solicitor to get an answer. And then it's on record, too, and it, I'm just saying, it shouldn't cost any different to get a question that way. But it was, it was very common, you know, at least my, my, my first eight years, almost everything that went through was always being sent to the solicitor for an opinion, for clarification, to make sure it's worded right. And we don't do that anymore, and I think partly because we, we feel there is this dollar figure on everything we, we want to do versus there was one flat fee before. So we could still do that moving forward, too. So again, if you don't need that answer before the next meeting, have it be put on the agenda and just say, I'd like this to be referred, and then the council can vote on it. And then it's going to the solicitor as an entire council vote. So just something to consider. That aside, I don't have issues with this, and I think as Counselor LaForest said, it's, it's a guide. I think if a counselor did have something confidential, what I don't know is, again, the billing, will he get a bill that says to city council, and this was for Counselor John Doe for asking such and such, and it's $250 an hour, but we also don't know, is a yes or no question, $100, you know, is it $50 just for them to say hello on the phone? And that is hard to determine, and I guess we'll have to feel that out going forward. I think if you look at the past two years, we really haven't used the solicitor too much. I think the most was probably when we called them in for the Mohawk Theater. And, but beyond that, I don't think there's anything been, been too, shouldn't have been too costly. Counselor Cohen?
I also feel like we haven't used the solicitor a lot, because there's been some limitations on it, and there's been kind of a negative, negative feeling towards going to the solicitor. So if there is something that is kind of a tool for the councilors, and I think I agree with Counselor Harpen, that having the council president or the committee chair sign this shouldn't be something that we have to do, because it may be, you know, confidential that, you know, we don't want them to know about. So I mean, we're an elected official, we should be able to request some information from the solicitor, and the elected, you know, people of the city should trust us to, to be looking at. I'm not going to spend a lot of money on this question, or maybe I've done my research ahead of time, and there seems to be a nice outline here of steps that we have to take ahead of time. So that would be the only thing I think I would change as well on the form, but I think it's a great start, and it definitely will help us councilors.
Other councilors? Counselor Lamb?
Just a question along those lines. If we have something on the city solicitor, does that automatically make a public record?
As for the confidentiality, I mean, again, if we get something back that says, why did the city council spend $200, I would have, if someone questioned that, I would think it would have to be answered. Now, to what point, if it's a personal thing, you know, again, I, I don't know. If it gets, then, I mean, it has to be personal on a city council business level, but I, I don't know. I don't, that's a question for the city solicitor.
Yeah.
Mr. Hopkins?
It seems to me if you're spending public money, that it becomes a public issue.
So we have on the floor right now, it's just a communication, right?
Was it a motion? Didn't you move to adopt the, oh, okay, so, okay.
Well, what's in front of us was the communication. What's that?
We, he made a motion to approve the-
I think we moved to approve.
Oh, we went right to, okay. So we, sounds like we have an amendment? For the signature part, yes, no?
I mean, I'd like to hear other people's opinions on that.
Well, that's fine.
Honestly, I'm, I'm okay with leaving that off. I agree with councilors Harpen and Cohen that as public servants, I think we can be trusted to know what we're doing. And as Counselor LaForest said, this serves mostly as a guideline. Start with these steps first. It may eliminate the need to contact the city solicitor at all.
Okay. So that needs to be an amendment, Counselor Lamb?
No, I, I was just gonna say, I, I agree with that. The only other thing I would say is just for, frankly, billing purposes, being able to track what we're actually asking and, because if we're not getting those bills, that's a whole nother challenge. So regardless of if we approve this form, I just think we also need that council rule piece and the billing piece, because if suddenly $5,000 goes into thin air, we're gonna want to know how, like when that happened. Doesn't, maybe not even what was asked, but just like when. So, yeah.
Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I can just comment on that. Usually on the monthly receipt report that we get from Mr. Fierro, there should be a listing of what the budget was and what was actually spent year-to-date, so we should, we could go back and check on that as well. Yep.
Counselor-
Just one more question through the chair to the clerk. So we're returning the form to the office of the city clerk. Can you just tell me what the process would be once you've received that?
This is new to me, so I don't know.
Yeah, that was, that was a decision of the general government committee.
Personally, I would probably send it to the administrative officer next.
Okay, so it would get timestamped?
I would record it in the office and then forward it to Michael Canales.
If it's going to the solicitor.
Isn't he the person that makes the contacts?
No.
No, so technically the counselor would be going directly to the, like after this is done, the counselor would be going, it would just be on file, essentially. It wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be, and that's why I'm thinking that that's more for a billing tracking mechanism, less than a approval piece.
Counselor Cohen and Counselor Hopkins?
So I think request to engage the solic, the city solicitor for a heading, I don't know if that, because to me, this almost is permission to do that, when I look at this.
Start it out that way.
Yeah. So I guess maybe I would rename receipt. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I can't think off my head what it would name it.
Counselor LaForest?
I guess it would suggest we send this back to general government to tighten this up, and also to incorporate some language into the council rules for the next term. I, I think the outline is good. We're all mostly in agreement here, and I think we just need to, again, tighten up the language a little bit.
And that's, I think that's a good suggestion, because usually when the, the council rules come forward, if there's any changes, they tend to go to a committee sometimes for reviewing, and maybe that can work in conjunction with general government, so they come back all at once. So-
Currently have a motion, so that would have to be-
Yeah, so the motion currently, do you want to rescind your motion?
Yes. Motion rescinded.
And-
Motion to refer to the general government committee?
Well, to post, to postpone and refer to general government committee. And I would probably suggest at least two meetings.
Probably the same February meeting would make sense. And I'll second that.
Second, all right. Any other discussion? Right now, we have a motion to postpone, refer to general government committee with a return date of February 1st.
Or, sorry, first meeting of February. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All
in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And this one I gotta step down on. Counselor Cohen?
Okay.
I have a point of order.
Why? What happened?
Oh.
Sorry.
You need a minimum of six people in order for this to pass. You don't have six people voting.
Nope.
So you either, it either dies, or you postpone it.
All right, but I think I have to read it first, right?
Yep, I'm sorry.
All right.
I gave him a little preliminary.
It's okay, I asked you. That was my fault. Paper number 11,570-1, in order authorizing the mayor under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, to sell real estate located at 151 Kemp Ave Sullivan School. This was in city council November 26, 2019, and-
Do I ask for that? Entertain a motion.
Okay, I will entertain that motion, yes.
Move to postpone to the second meeting in January.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay.
Okay.
I can't second, right?
You can.
So we need another motion. Come on, Debbie.
Yeah, I'm not sure. You're kind of in the-
Um.
I'm not sure what we do in this situation.
Counselor Lamb, what do we do?
So you have a motion to postpone, and you need a second.
Right, so the motion has died.
Move to deny.
I'm sorry?
Move to deny.
Do I have a second? Okay, um. I either need a second, or I need another motion.
Correct.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? I've never seen this before. Okay, only with me up here. Um.
Yeah, because we don't have enough to vote anyways.
I don't know what the rule is on this.
I honestly don't know myself.
So we can, we cannot discuss on this, but yes, Counselor Harpen?
Can we discuss the rule that we have five people here, and if we did vote on it, if it would be a, a good vote?
No.
No, you can't have any discussion on-
Requires six votes, correct.
Okay. So we don't want a motion to postpone, or motion to refer, or what do we-
I think we, well, I mean, disregarding the fact that we can't really discuss this until we have a motion on the table, my thought is this, that until we can meet again as a city councillor, a city council in 2020, it makes sense just to postpone it. If it dies then, it dies then. Fine, but at least we will be able to take action. Right now, we cannot take action on it.
Make your motion again.
Move to postpone to the second meeting in January.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Wilkinson?
Because this is so controversial, I would think that since we're postponing, it might be a great idea if the city council actually took a tour of the building to see the condition. We've heard about what the condition of the building is. It's had a fire. It's been mothballed for a number of years now. Once winter gets into a building like that, says winterized, it never really recovers. There's this thing called mold. It's very unhealthy that I'm sure that building with all the water from the fire and, and from all the other things that have crept in there over the time, plus it was vandalized. I'm sure that the building is full of mold, and which makes, if you, I did a quick little analysis, say, the length of the building wasn't there, about $65,000. The demolition of the building is close to $650,000. So if it's not viable as a building anymore, there's a real question as to what its real value is. I mean, I, I was opposed to this because I'm, I'm in the real estate business, and I'm not selling anything for a dollar. But if the building is so bad, and somebody's willing to take it over at their own cost and expense, knowing that it's that bad, I could be persuaded to change my mind. I'm keeping an open mind on this. Right now, it's, I'm definitely against it, but you gotta look at it. If it's worth a negative number, then a dollar is a positive number. So I think whatever happens, let, since we have the time, that we should all go up there and get a tour. Find out what it, what we're really voting on here. Just a comment.
I don't know if that can be part of the motion, or if that should be just a separate motion.
Oh, no, I'm not asking it to be a motion. I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea.
I agree, by the way.
It's a nice suggestion. Any other councilors? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. No one for me, too.
And without talking about subcommittee, I just want to say, I think on the process itself, that that particular vote, there was enough to vote on it, it just would have failed. So it, just saying, if five people voted on it, it just wouldn't have had the six to pass. So it could have been voted on, it just would not have had enough-
I don't think any of us were entirely clear on that.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to say, it, it, as, as process, it could have been voted on. All right, so that is passed, and paper number 11,826, an ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code. This was in council November 12, 2019. It was voted to refer to finance committee and voted to postpone to the meeting of December 26, 2019. What do we entertain?
Motion to postpone to the first meeting in February, please.
Second. And discussion? I do. Counselor Wilkinson?
I just want everybody to know that the finance committee did set a meeting up to review all this. And however, the city couldn't send anybody to the meeting, nor the mayor, nor the administrative officer made themselves unavailable. I'm not, I'm not saying they intentionally did that, but they were not available, and they expected us to meet anyways, whether, they said, I believe, the phrase is, "We can't get there, but we'll give you the file." That tells us nothing. We, we can't have a meeting, a finance committee, if we don't have anybody to give us input by why all these fees were going up. So I just want to let everybody know that we did, the finance committee just didn't slough on this. We just didn't have the input we needed to make a decision.
Any other councilors? We have a motion to postpone to the first meeting in February. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Meeting, uh, motion pass. Brings us to committees and reports. Any, none? Licenses? None. Open forum. Anyone wishing to speak? Two minutes. Mr. Smith?
Robert Smith, 140 Pleasant Street. Well, I'm gonna go further on this thing with that school up on Kemp Avenue. First of all, I don't know if this group of people here who plan on wanting to have this building, have the finances to fix it up, start their business. The other issue that I'm concerned about is, this gonna be viewed as a school building where they will be tactically exempt? I would be against that. The city should have had the right to sell this to the second person who had cash in hand. We shouldn't be selling our buildings for $1. That doesn't make any sense to me. We have a tight budget in our city. We should try everything that we can to gain money, revenue into our budget. This is not a good idea. I think the council hopefully will vote this down. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? Yeah, Mr. Chapianza?
Yes, Brian Chapianza, 113 Pleasant Street. First of all, I want to thank the present council for their service to the City of North Adams over the last two years, and good luck in their endeavors if they're moving on. And to those of you who were re-elected, good luck in the upcoming term. Also, I'd like to ask if, if there's anything in the city ordinance about the buffer zones on the sidewalks between the actual sidewalk and the parking areas on Main Street. I noticed that after the last couple of storms, there's about a foot, foot and a half on the sidewalks towards the parking lanes that are usually unshovelled, unplowed, or untreated, and it makes it difficult for anybody that's discharging a passenger on the passenger side of their vehicle to get in and out of the vehicle, having to walk through slush and snow to get to a sidewalk. So I would like to ask if something can be looked into on that, to make sure that the walkways are clear and that people don't trip getting in and out of their vehicles. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jason Smith. I live at 55 Whitman Street. I just want to introduce myself. I speak for Michael Gazal. I also speak for Viseel Buntic. I'm their man in town, and I butted heads with your Public Arts Commission. They were kind of rude, that's on them, but I just wanted to come in here and apologize for that. The way that they came in, just like, this is what we're doing, get a, like, kind of, we've got a plan, that's fine, but I'm in charge of that building. The owners don't live around here. I'm the one checking on that building. And I may have been a little stern with them, but my employer called the city after this, after Mrs. Helms had called him and informed her that I, I'm here to help, like, I want to bring the city, the building back to life, but I will not be steamrolled by people when they walk into the building. I'm a disabled-
at a reevaluation stage, so they're, they'll be reevaluating the next couple of years of appropriations to the city, and also McCune School is involved as well. So they were working on that, and we should be seeing something, I imagine that should be sent to the mayor probably in January.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wilkinson.
Since this is our last meeting of this term, I just wanted to say that I've truly enjoyed working with all the councilors that are presently on the council. I know we've all had our moments over the last couple of years that probably we disagreed and questioned other people's decisions, but for, for those that are leaving now, thank you very much. It was truly, I hope, memorable for you as it was for me. Thanks.
Counselor Cohen.
Okay, my last time speaking, at least this time, I want to thank you all for being a part of my life for the past two years. This has truly been a gift and growth for me, I think, as just a citizen of the city and, and as a person. I, I welcome anybody to still reach out to me, I'm gonna try to be as hands-on as possible. It's truly bittersweet to be leaving tonight, but thank you guys for the last two years. It's gonna be very sad to not have the meetings with you guys, but hopefully I'm on that side with all of our friends, and I can go up to the mic and make sure everybody can hear me on the other side. But thank you.
Thank you.
Truly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilors?
All right, that being said, Counselor Cohen, if you don't mind coming up here, since you're the only one that's leaving, I just want to...
Here's another character. What's he have now? What's he have up his, what's he have up his sleeve?
This is what happens when you're a councilor, an artist, yeah.
This is an extension, basically, of Alaska, but this one is more personalized, so...
That's awesome.
If you notice, there's a little food bag for West End there.
Oh, there is!
With the recycling, because, you know, the plastic bag was a big discussion of yours, and the food, and you're holding the gavel.
That is awesome.
Even though it was brief, you were holding the gavel.
Thank you for your dedication and service, time on multiple committees, standing up for the residents, that's my favorite part, and filling in as an interim president. Wow, that's so special, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I wore this outfit.
And lastly, I just want to say, Counselor Lamb, I just know, like, two years ago, I was supposed to do something, and at that time, I did not, and a couple times, you haven't let me live it down. So typically, when presidents leave, they do, do get a gift, and I have your gift, two years belated. You can have it afterwards.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can cross that off.
I won't hold it against you for the rest of your life.
There you go, all right. And anyone else? Not, just briefly, I know I said last time, thank you, I'm gonna keep it really short, I appreciate your time. I will say this, as much as I liked it up here, I do like it better down on the floor. So be glad to be down there, and people, you won't, might not be as happy, but I'll be down there. So again, thank you to everyone for your time, and definitely memories that I'll, I'll hold. Okay, correspondence, we have none, and motion to adjourn is in order.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?